Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone. I think we'll get started. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, our prayer is from Romans. Will you live for your own goals, comfort, and pleasure, or will you live the rest of your life for God's glory, knowing that He has promised eternal rewards? And Commissioner Kukowski has the dog this morning.
Come on. You didn't see how little it was. You would have known it was my dog today, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this is our dog for the week. She is five years old. She will be available today, so if you're looking for a small dog, she's got a great personality, very friendly, very laid back. Love to go home with someone, so come down to the kennel, pick her up, take her home. And if you don't like little dogs, you want big dogs, text out on Facebook, we've got plenty, so.
9:45, we'll have an appointment in regards to the indigent attorney fees under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Okay, Administrator Cordes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. I do have a number of personnel issues, potential hires at Job Family Services. You may, and some appointments to an incentive review committee. I'd like to discuss those with the Board. It's allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. I would also like to talk about pending litigation and potential purchase of real estate. All three topics do qualify under the Sunshine Act, so I ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those three items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of March 1st and 9th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Children and family, establish Lorraine County Healthier Buckeye Council in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 355.02, and designate Lorraine County Children and Families Council to serve as member, apply, receive, and oversee the administration of the grant.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Children and family, establish Lorraine County Healthier Buckeye Council in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 355.02, and designate Lorraine County Children and Families Council to serve as member, apply, receive, and oversee the administration of the grant.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Community Development.
Did you want to talk about that one at all?
Well, if you want an update, I had asked for it to be held last week. I know I've talked to two of you individually, and maybe the public would like an update since we held it. I did meet with the Director. We did have some talk with a few of the Board members. They can submit three proposals for grant money under the Buckeye Council format. So they are meeting with the people that made a presentation here to vet out their program. I'm comfortable that they're going to give it at least a good review and see if it can work in our community, and that was a concern last week. The folks that formed the Buckeye Committee are pretty much the same people that are on the Children and Family First Council, so it makes some sense. They can, they meet now, trying to pull them together into another meeting, another council really didn't make a lot of sense with busy people, so I think this will work out well. We'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, good. So they made contact, then?
Have a meeting today.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Under Community Development, approve semi-annual revolving loan fund report for the period July 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, estimated by Lorraine County Community Development Department.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Amendment Resolution 15654 adopted September 30th, 2015, entering into contract with Lorraine County Transit to provide the Medicaid transportation. Amendment is to reflect the extend end date to June 30th, 2016 for March 31st.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Hey Jim, in regards to this, is it just saying at the same rate in addition, or since it's an extension, same dollars?
Actually...
We always talk about transit, but these are issues where we bring dollars back.
It's the same rate. We're pretty pleased with how this went. We got off to rocky start, as everybody knows, there was a lot of discontentment. As a refresher, this was the reimbursement for self-travel that people seemed to be...
Taking advantage.
I like that. I was going to use the word abusing, but taking advantage of is probably just as good. It was costing a lot of money, tens and tens of thousands of dollars as people were self-transporting into Cleveland for specifically qualified purposes. We were able to bring that all in together into one transportation environment, and it's very cost-effective. They're very happy how it's working. You remember, we had several people in here, and they were pretty upset. Some of them were getting paid hundreds, not thousands of dollars a month for that self-transportation, and now they have to ride a vehicle with other folks, and we have some steady ridership, and it's growing. Just proves that we can make these dollars happen. And remember something about these federal dollars from Job and Family Services? They're the only federal dollars that can be used to match other federal dollars, so we can use those dollars against future allocation of FTA dollars. So we want to get more into that environment to match federal to federal as best we can. It brings a lot of resources to our community.
Okay, glad it's finally looked at. I'd like to see the extension. Why is it only a 90-day extension?
Because their fiscal year ends at the end of June.
Okay.
That's number one, and of course, we have to watch the cap because there's bidding requirements. Even though it's public to public, there's a competitive procurement procedure that's necessary at certain thresholds in the federal regulations.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm very glad that we did this. I think the system clearly was, yeah, being taken advantage of, and we found a way to use the dollars, I believe, more responsibly and still deliver the quality of service that needed to be delivered, so thank you for working on this.
There's still a small group of people that are still being able to get the reimbursement.
It depends on, sometimes there's specialty needs that we're not able to... We don't do, per se, medical transport. We can handle people with certain challenges and certain needs, but not everyone. So when they fall outside that environment of service, we put them on a different level of service. So all that is being reviewed. Remember, we had one person getting around $35,000 a year.
Yes, ridiculous.
And reimbursement for trips.
But then we had the lady with the special needs child, and she was still able to do her own reimbursement.
Again, there are people that have some challenges that fall outside what we're doing right now, and those will be on case-by-case basis.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with County Commissioners of Ohio Service Corporation and Ohio CSCE Directors Association to provide fraud investigation and location services from West Publishing Corporation Minnesota in the amount of $1,568 effective June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer or Contract to Mark Haynes Construction, Inc., Norwalk, in the amount of $65,208 for the Middle Ridge Bridge 0074 Replacement Project in Brownhome Township. For bids received on March 1st, this being the most responsive complying specifications, and will be paid from the MVGT Bridge Engineering Project. Issue notice to proceed on or before April 1st, complete on or before August 19th, and authorize Administrator to notify the auditor to release, retain, and adjet completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Or Contract to Singhis Construction, La Grange, in the amount of $317,731.15 for J.C.R.I. Road Bridge 0048 Replacement, Columbia Township, and will be paid 89% OPWC, 11% from MVGT Engineering Bridge Account. For bids received on March 8th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, issue notice to proceed on or before mid-July, and complete on or before November 4th. Authorize Administrator to notify auditor to release, retain, and adjet completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
I'll do the presentation.
Yeah, at this point, then, we'll move to our appointment concerning indigent attorney fees, Lorraine County Bar Association, and Attorney Mike Camera. Yeah, you can use that podium if you'd like, Mike. Thank you.
I only hope the Commissioners don't expect us over at the courthouse to work as efficiently as you do. Man, that was something, really.
Preparation, it's all about preparation, Mike.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. For anybody who doesn't know, we have public defenders in Ohio, we have a court-appointed system here in Lorraine County, we don't have a public defender. However, everything is overseen by the Public Defender's Office in the state of Ohio, and they, as recently as December of last year, they put out Regulation 120-1-15. It's only one paragraph, so I'll read it. In establishing a fee schedule to be paid, appointed to appointed counsel in indigent cases eligible for reimbursement pursuant to 120.33 of the Revised Code, the County Commissioners and County Bar Association shall establish a schedule that is comparable to the fees paid to retain counsel in the same types of cases. Changes to the county fee schedule must be submitted to the Ohio Public Defender before such changes go into effect. Doesn't say it has to be approved by the county, by the public defender, it just has to be submitted to them. So they're seeming to say that our fee schedule should be comparable to what private counsel get. I'm not here to ask for that. What I'm here to do is to ask you to raise the hourly rate from $40 and $50 an hour to $75 an hour. My brethren wanted me to point out that it's a constitutional right, under Gideon versus Wayne right, that indigent people still have the right to have a lawyer even if they can't afford it. I'm sure anybody who's watched LA Law hears that over and over again, you get one appointed, and we're familiar with that. In my quest to have the hourly rate raised from $40 or $50 an hour to $75 an hour, we do have the support of the Lorraine County Bar Association, we have the support of the common police judges across the street. And I do talk about effective assistance of counsel. I know my brethren have tasked me with the, probably the easiest task of my life is to explain that things cost more today than they did back in 1988 when this fee schedule was last enacted, 28 years ago. It's been 28 years since we've talked about raising the rate, the hourly rate. During that time, and these are old figures, there were over 1,000 cases, criminal cases that were overturned in the United States, a lot of them for ineffective assistance of counsel. Over 100 capital cases, capital murder cases reversed, mostly on DNA evidence, and the capital cases themselves, about 25% of those were overturned based on ineffective assistance of counsel. Recently, I read in the paper that more cases were overturned in 2015 than were overturned in 2014. I think this is what's driving the Public Defender's Office to say, we need to pay these lawyers more money so we keep older, more experienced lawyers like myself in the system to aid these indigent defendants. I'm qualified to handle capital murder cases. Capital murder cases, obviously, where the state is trying to kill my client. What happened was, when we had a capital, a law that allowed us to kill Ohioans for certain types of heinous murders, we had to have qualified lawyers represent them. And under our fee schedule of $40 and $50 an hour, it was a little difficult. In fact, in Ohio, the list of lawyers like myself that were qualified to do it grew to about 800 lawyers. But that amount dwindled down to 200 lawyers. People like me called down to Columbus and said, "Take my name off the list, because I don't want to do capital cases where they're trying to kill my client for $40 an hour." So I think the Supreme Court was concerned, so concerned, that they took over the hourly rate and said, "Hey, that's it. There's going to be a minimum of 90 bucks an hour to represent these people, because we can't get any decent attorneys to represent these people." So that, you know that's taken place. Now, with regard to comparing 1988 to today, I looked at the Consumer Price Index that the Social Security Administration put out. They started from 1913, when we first had Social Security, till today. And what they did, when you got down to 1988, they were at about 100 for a number. And when you got to date, 2015, the number was 214. So simply put, they're trying to tell us that what you bought in 1988 for $100 costs you $214 today. That's the government. I did a Google search, 1988. Income in 1988 was about $24,500. The average automobile cost $10,500. Gasoline was 91 cents a gallon. It's, I know gasoline's down, but it's not 91 cents a gallon anymore. I have a client that I represent, he's an auto mechanic, so I asked him what they charged. He said $109 an hour. I took, and I thought I've talked to people about expenses that lawyers have now that they didn't have in 1988. I'm able to talk about that, because I started practicing in 1980. And so the expenses I'm talking about are specifically expenses that we didn't have back in the 80s. Computers, computer programs, the internet, wireless telephones, advertising was relatively new in the 1980s. We have continuing legal education that's mandatory for lawyers now. We didn't have it when I started practicing law. It's 12 hours a year. We're mandated to have malpractice insurance now. We weren't then. In order to get court-appointed cases in Lorraine County, there's a local rule, you have to be a member of the Lorraine County Bar Association. Also, after I practiced for about eight years, which had been about 1988, they decided to have registration numbers for lawyers. Didn't have them first eight or nine years that I practiced, and they said, well, the registration fee was $50. No big deal. That registration fee is now $350. In addition to that, if you want to handle a capital case, you have to take a two-day seminar every two years. I've taken that seminar at least nine times. That seminar is free for public defenders. I have to pay for it. Also, if you want to do an OVI felony, that's a drunk-driving felony case, which I don't think came into law until 1996, you also have to take a six-hour course to qualify for that. I understand that currently, this is a little different than most budget items, in that the state reimburses the county, and I believe Tim Looby told me, around 40% of the money.
It's actually up to 49.8% now, from 23% when I first entered office. I spent a lot of time on this, working with Representative Booth.
Almost 50%, then?
Yes, we're up to almost 50%.
And I know we also have, the judges often order indigent clients to repay court-appointed legal fees if they're able to. That's my argument.
That was a good one. It was a good argument.
Any questions? No?
Spent a lot of time, as I told you, I'll have some banter with you. We've known each other a long time, the Mr. Wilson, the bar people. Yeah, our rates are about the lowest in the state hourly rate. When we actually asked for some numbers, I said, "It's more, it's not the maximums, we're looking at the hourly rates that are spent." And as I told you before, whenever I serve on my Justice Committee at the state level, sort of like Lorraine County is the poster child for how indigent attorney fees shouldn't be done with. They keep saying we use an inordinate amount of dollars, and the way each and every judge does their expendables, and I, Tim would probably be able to expand on this more, but we don't have a system, I guess, apparently, compared to other counties. Where it's Public Defender's Office or Mr. Mead, so you've got 100 different schedules, and I had actually brought that up five or six years ago here, and it didn't quite work for our county. But we have been able to get the reimbursements up. Like I said, it's been a long time working on that with Representative Booth, who did a great job on that, and they did raise the fees up. But even though we get a 50% reimbursement, 49%, that could be a temporary thing based on the state budget and how our current government decides to treat us. They did add $13 million to the budget, which would be this fiscal year, which ends in June 30th, and then there's the MBR coming up, they're going to keep it at that rate. I wouldn't be opposed to looking at the fee schedule based on what our reimbursement is going to be, you know, where it would almost be an up and down based on what might happen at the state level.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to adjust those, I know, we pay poor amount, and everyone who is given an indigent attorney, you know, has to have proper representation. I would never argue that. And I don't know if the Public Defender's Office yet has brought out their newest software. I know the attorneys have to report, but there was another side of it that hadn't been implemented a year ago.
Well, I like their software. You know, their software doesn't allow us to put in, the result is not guilty.
Okay.
I have to put in guilty when I went to jury trial, and then use white-out to white-out the not.
Really?
Okay, so thank you, Public Defender's Office. I guess what point I really should make here is this. It's been 28 years.
Right.
You people know what lawyers cost.
Yes, we do. Just paid a bunch of them last year.
And I'll bet you didn't pay them, I charge $200 an hour, but I'll bet you didn't pay them $75 an hour. We feel that this is imperative, we don't want to talk about it for a year, we've tried to keep it as simple as possible. We didn't reinvent the wheel here. All we're saying is, change the rate, in and out of court, $75 an hour. And we believe that's what the public defender has recommended.
Mike, you've talked about the common police, and how about the DR side? Because we're what, at 30 and 40 at the DR side?
Well, let me say this, but this is why we've waited 28 years, because, well, let's talk to juvenile, let's talk to the DR. They can talk later on. I'm talking now.
You're just talking about the common police and the general division.
There we go. If they want to come over and talk to the Commissioners, and by the way, I've pointed out to younger lawyers who gripe about the hourly rate, how ridiculous it is, and some want to blame the Commissioners. And whenever they want to blame the Commissioners, I tell them what Ted Kahlo told me. Bring something to us. How can you blame the Commissioners for not agreeing with you when you don't bring something to them? So that's what we've done. Thank you.
Do you have a cost analysis, if we did raise it to that, what it would actually cost?
No, I don't.
That would be Lisa.
It'll be pretty easy. It's almost double.
Right.
So if you go to 75, we have 40 now, alright, so...
Well, it's 40 and 50.
The, we spend, I think it's about, let's see, Tim backed, about 1.3, 1.4?
Yeah.
So...
Actually, less this year based on the reimbursement schedule. I think around 1 million or 1,001, I think we're actually less. So what do we do? We take it up $25 base. I would say, is there more in-court time and more out-of-court time in regards to indigent fees? I don't know who to ask that from.
Probably more out-of-court time.
More out-of-court time, so you bring that up. So an increase at 75 would cost us basically $1,250 an hour would be our increase based on how many billable hours have come across in indigent attorney fees, that would have to be broken down by budget.
It sounds like your Administrator could have a pretty good estimate of that.
It sounds like it's going to be about additional $500,000 or $600,000.
Thirty-three percent more.
Okay, so...
A bargain.
Yeah, we have all kinds of money here.
That's the problem.
Thank you, I got to get to court.
Yeah.
Make this an out-of-court.
You have to.
Bill, you got to come up here, introduce yourself and everything.
I did want to point out, and I appreciate Mike making this presentation to you, we've known each other, and as we've talked about, over the years, everything has gone up in price. One of the things that Mike missed, but I thought was a great presentation, is we're not asking to raise the caps on the fees. The judges still act as a gatekeeper, and there are judges that have looked at fee bills, both in the municipal and in the common police court, and have told lawyers, "No, I'm not going to pay you for this amount of money." They may feel they're overbilled, maybe they don't think the work is there. So we're not asking, as Mike said, for anything extraordinary, at least in our opinion, other than raising the hourly rate. The judges still act as a gatekeeper, aren't saying, "No, if this amount exceeds a certain dollar amount as far as the cap can, for the felony ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives." And as you may know, I know in the Lorraine Municipal Court, absent a request to the court for an extraordinary fee, the cap is $250 regardless of what happens to the case. So there are still the caps in place, and I think the letter we had from the Bar Association did indicate that the domestic relations and juvenile court was looking to go to $65 an hour. That was what they had indicated, and I believe our President of the Bar Association had signed off on. Again, we do have a letter of support from them as well.
Well, actually, I sent an email out to my peers, because Commissioner Kukowski had asked what the rates were, and everything that came back from our clerk, because of the caps. Actually, I sent an email back. I think the discussion more about the hourly rate, not raising the cap.
That is correct.
Okay, we've had enough discussion, Bill, and we've been at enough, and talked to Mike and everything. I'm pretty aware of what's the situation. Yeah, I know it's the hourly rate, it's not the caps that we're paying.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, I want to thank you for all that you do. It's really important, you play an important role in the whole justice system as well, too, and, you know, we continue to struggle with all kinds of budget concerns. I was, I want to, you know, thank my colleague, Commissioner Kahlo, for all the work he did in Columbus on this issue, and it's certainly an issue that needed to be addressed, and I know when I was down there, a lot of times it was kind of hitting a wall, and it's important to have strong representation. To get that strong representation, I always say, basically get what you pay for, you know, so, and people need to be paid for their professional services and times, and, you know, at a time where we're struggling with our budget, too, we, you know, we often look at what goes on in the prosecutor's office. We've got attorneys over there who have gone to law school and spent a lot of time, and, you know, based upon what they're making, too. So unfortunately, the system is broken, and it's broken because of a lack of support from, you know, from Columbus and just an overall financial struggle that we find ourselves in. But it was a good presentation, and certainly willing to research this and explore it, and certainly been a long time before we've addressed it. You did, just as you were asked, you brought it to us, so now we got to look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordes.
I have no further comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
Um, let's see, I do have a couple matters of pending litigation.
Commissioner, sir, report.
I just want to congratulate everyone that won in the election yesterday, and also, even those that lost, you ran a good, good campaigns all the way across the board, and I also want to congratulate all the people that actually came out to vote, I think it was a record setter, for a long time, 40, almost 43%, so...
And you've still got more votes than Commissioner Kalo.
Always, always, people like her, Jim.
I always say I campaign a lot harder than you do.
Yeah, okay.
It's not true.
Again, congratulations to all the winners, a great guy actually was out at the polls yesterday afternoon for about three hours. Again, those who participated and weren't successful, though, thank you for participating. There's always the next election, I think everybody did very well, they all spoke well. It was a very good primary, like I said, nothing crazy, I mean, other than at the national level, but we shall carry on. It was a busy week, multiples of events. Congratulate Sheffield, Sheffield Lake Endowment for their education, they had a great event the other night, and then tribute to Mike Tillman at the Palace, congratulations to the entire board there, Jeff Neal, Kurt Hernan, Paige Hernan, Anthony Rich, just a wonderful tribute to a great guy who spent a lot of time volunteering at the Palace, he's really going to be missed. This week for meetings, a multitude on, Noahacka Board Meeting was on Friday, covering everything we did the last quarter, and also after that, we had a meeting for, with the people from Transportation for America, where Noahacka is one of seven MPOs in the country getting together to look at metrics for performance measures and funding to improve our infrastructure. So it's going to be exciting, I'll be in Indiana, Indianapolis for three days in May for that. I have a mandatory webinar at 2:00 today, Mr. Cordes, so if we're not past 2:00, I have to be on it to participate.
Well, as long as you guys don't wait an hour and a half for pizza and stuff, we'll be there pretty quick.
Yeah, just a very busy week, and congratulations to everyone who made it, and on to November. End of my report.
I'd like to congratulate Auditor Karen Schaber on a great event that she had over in Lorraine. I understand that Commissioner Kalo breaded a lot of fish that evening before, so I said a good job, fish was good, pierogies were good. Had a chance to attend the Lorraine County Health District meeting, Lorraine County Community College Annual Meeting, of course, there's a lot of discussion going on with merging into the system, the city of Lorraine, Avon Lake, I guess there's still some discussion in Elyria as to what that might look like, but that's another example of government trying to work together and, and be efficient and effective, and, you know, we're blessed to have a good county health department, even though they don't report to us, but they run a, a very good operation over there, and hopefully that merger plan will be able to work out. Had a chance to attend the St. Jude Fish Fry last Friday, I don't know where we'd be without fish fries on Fridays in Lorraine County, right, during the letting season, always packed, regardless of where you go, there's no such thing as a short line. I had the opportunity to actually stand in line with, and then have dinner with former Sheriff Mertz, so...
Really?
Yeah, he and his wife, apparently, I guess, had moved back from, they were in Kentucky for a while, and come back to the area, so we had a, had a nice conversation, talking about how easy things are in county government, and never, never a rough day, so, but I'm being sarcastic. The Police Chiefs Association had a very nice breakfast over at DeLuca's on Sunday, it was always a good meeting with the chiefs, they have quite a struggle, I'm sure Chief Whitley is, is celebrating today after the passage of issue six. Someone who lives in Elyria certainly want to thank the residents of Elyria, it certainly was badly needed, first income tax increase in 24 years in the city, and Councilman Mark Jesse, wow, talk about a miracle worker and a magic man, I mean, he put in a lot of time and effort, I'd worked on a lot of initiatives when I was with the city, it seemed like we were always losing 60, 40, and he totally flipped that vote, and wow, just did an amazing job, and couldn't have happened without the whole support of the community, and, and it shows what kind of good things you can do when you get all the elected officials together finally on the same page, and, and the city workers and everybody else working together on the same initiative, so congratulations to that, and I'm sure Chief Whitley's breathing a little easier. I saw him out at the car show, and I was asking him, asking him if he was looking for patrol cars out there, since he had had issues with cars breaking down, but hopefully they'll be able to address some of the very serious concerns Elyria's had. Also attended a spaghetti dinner at the FOPA number 46 there in Lorraine. If I have one more pasta thing, I think I'm going to explode, and just a lot of pasta, because, yeah, that was followed by the, Lorraine Historical Society had their, their pasta dinner, too. My doctor always says you need to lose 10 pounds, I keep asking him how that's possible with all the events that we go to, but, and then congratulations to all those who participated in the election. I've got to tell you, a lot of really good, solid, classy candidates, you know, ran, ran in the race, and, you know, the voters have made their decisions, still a couple close races that are going to have to be looked at with provisionals out there and absentees, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, nobody's a loser. It takes a lot to really step up and have your family support you, and, and run for office, and go through the criticism, and go under the microscope, but, so no one's a loser, but a lot of, a lot of good elections last night, and, and most importantly, as Lori pointed out, the voters. It's just so critical to get out and vote, I'm just so baffled by how easy we make it to vote in this country, and people still don't get out to vote, but 42, 43%, it's a good number, and so, as, as we always say, you got to get out there and exercise your voice, and that means exercise your vote, and that completes my report.
Board correspondents?
Uh, I move that we approve the board correspondents and waive the reading of the correspondents.
Second.
Mr. Landy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Gaskowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Any public comment, anybody willing to, ready, willing to speak? Anything to say? Okay, yeah, seeing no public comment, I would move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel issues that were outlined by the county administrator, and legal issues that were outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kalo, or Mr. Landy?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Gaskowski? Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.